Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome, everyone. I am Sherri Clemens, and welcome to the Tuesday, February 5th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. If everyone would please stand, and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Reading, if you would take a roll call, make sure we have a quorum.
Commissioner Cibl.
Here.
Commissioner Cybil. Commissioner Furby.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Waterman.
Here.
Just a few preliminary things really quick. The meeting is being recorded, as always, in writing, but also it's on CATS-TV. They told me that it would be on this Friday, but if you ever want to know when the meetings are going to be, you can go to catsilver.org, which is C-A-T-S-I-L-V-E-R dot org, and they have the schedule. Also, apparently, you can get a disk of the meetings from CATS if you are interested, and you should be able to find the information on that there, too. Because the meetings are on television, we do ask that when people speak that they come up to the podium and use the mic so that they can be heard with everyone in the television audience as well, and because we have a bigger room, it helps. Okay. First on the agenda this evening is approval of the agenda. Do we have anything on the agenda that needs addressing?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented. Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second. Okay. All in favor of approval of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. The agenda has been approved. Then, if we could, take a look at the minutes from the last meeting, which was actually December 4th. And do we have any questions, comments, edits on those minutes? Has everyone had a chance to look them over?
Move to adopt the amendments as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of approval of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. The amendments, the minutes from December 4th have been approved. And next on the agenda, we have a public hearing, VA 12 dash oh four, a request for a variance. And has any, have any commissioners had any ex parte conversations regarding this request?
No.
Okay. Any person who is wishing to testify in this hearing, you need to now come forward and be sworn in. Being sworn in does not obligate you to testify, but if you want to testify, you do need to swear in. So if everyone would step up to the podium who is interested in testifying this evening. Okay. Shall we have everyone?
I repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Charlie Dwyer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
Will be the truth.
Will be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
Nothing but the truth.
Nothing but the truth.
Unguilty of perjury.
Unguilty of perjury.
Thank you.
Amen. Okay. So, the way the procedure will work, just to let you know, is that staff will come up and present the variance request and give the staff reports, after which the commissioners will have time to ask any questions of the staff. And then we will have, who is representing? Okay, is it Sissy McAndrew?
No.
Okay. Then we'll have you come up and give your presentation and have any questions, following anybody who is in favor of that, who wants to speak. And following that, anyone who would be opposed to it would be allowed to speak also. So first we'll hear from staff.
Good evening, Commissioners, members of the public that have come to the hearing. This is case VA 12 dash zero four. It's for a variance to construct a garage at 929 Camino de Sueños. The applicant is Habitat for Humanity, and it's in the Nueva Vista de Plata subdivision on the corner of 10th and Mountain View. The Land Use Code, Section 3.3.2, actually.
Did you skip forward, Jim?
Yeah. Okay. Habitat for Humanity applied for and received a building permit for the garage with only a 10-foot setback in October 2012. And as a background, a garage has to have a 20-foot setback so that vehicles may be parked on the property. The area that the home is being constructed in is a 10-foot setback area, but that's for the primary structure, not the garage or park. This is a copy of the building permit that Habitat for Humanity received from the Community Development Department, and it's signed by the building inspector. And that's the permit they received in October. Jim, could you close that for me? According to Section 6.3.19A of the Land Use and Zoning Code of 2010, a variance allows for a building or structure to be built if strict enforcement of the Land Use Code would result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships for the applicant. And that, by granting the variance, the spirit of the Land Use Code will be observed, public safety and welfare secured, and substantial justice be done. Under no condition will a variance permit a use that is not otherwise permitted in the zone district where the property is located. The required findings that the Planning and Zoning Commission shall meet have to all be met, all seven of them. This is, a variance is a case where all seven findings have to be met, not one of them. Would you like me to read them into the record? Let me do it from this microphone for you, so I don't... The hardship of which the applicant complains. It's one that is unique to the applicant rather than one suffered by the neighbors or the general public. And number two, the hardship relates to the applicant's land or property. And the hardship was not created by the deliberate action of the applicant, or by one under his control, and reasonable remedies are not presently available. Number four, the granting of the variance is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. And number five, the granting of the variance is in harmony with the purposes and intent of the Land Use Code. Number six, the granting of the variance will not be injurious to the neighborhoods surrounding the property where the variance is proposed, and otherwise is not detrimental to the public welfare. Number seven, the variance will not result in the extension, expansion, or enlargement of a non-conforming structure in violation of Article 7, and will not authorize the initiation of non-conforming use of land. You'll notice in previous hearings, the staff recommends which findings that the applicant meets. In this case, we did not, because part of the original mistake came from our office. So in this case, it's our staff opinion that the application is complete, and that the decision will rest with you, the Commission, about if the variance should be granted or not. We don't have a recommendation. Do you have any questions, or would you like to see anything else again?
Yeah, I have a question on the prior Land Use Code. Is that, is that the one that was adopted in 1960?
The previous one before that was 1999, correct?
And was there a 10-foot setback requirement in the residential B?
Commissioners, the setback map is not linked specifically to zones. It's more linked to the character of the neighborhood. So that area was originally zoned industrial. When the town decided to, or the bulk of it was industrial...
It was just a small portion of it.
What was the rest, three areas?
Rest of it was R.B.
Okay. So some of it is rezoned to be all R.B. In that area, the setback standard was, and still is, 10 feet. And that is a setback that certainly precedes the current Land Use Code. In the current code, the zone was, the setbacks were changed specifically for garages. And the reason is, or the reason was, is that commonly, garages get converted to some kind of family room, or some kind of storage, or something else. And so people then no longer have a place to put their car on their property. If the garage were only 10 feet from the street, they would be parking partly on their property and partly on the sidewalk, or where the sidewalk would go. So in order to ensure that all parcels met the requirement that two parking spaces are provided off the street, the code was changed to require all garages to have a 20-foot setback so you could park in front of it if, for some reason, the garage were converted, or filled, or something.
Yeah, the reason, the reason I asked, the copy of the old code that I have, residential B is silent on setbacks, and residential, residential A requires 20-foot setbacks, and residential B is silent except when it's adjacent to a A-zone. And I'm sure that, and I'm sure there were a few amendments in whatever that was, 40 years.
The setbacks are key to a setback map. So for instance, there are areas in the historic district that are residential A, but the setback is the average of the setbacks of the buildings on either side. There's an overlay district there. Commonly, residential A is 20 feet. Some residential B, I believe, is 20 feet, and those were mostly areas that were along arterial roads. And that's from the 99 setback. But in the 2010 setback, the arterial road setback requirement was removed, but there is not a perfect overlap between zoning categories and the setback map. But that area was, in fact, the residential B area, and was a 10-foot setback area. That's what it was originally plotted. But I just want to make sure that it's clear that it's not directly linked to zoning. It's more linked to the map that is trying to characterize the neighborhood.
Thank you. I think there's a whole bunch of history here that I'm completely unaware of, and I think the new code addresses many of the issues that, yeah, so, thank you.
The other, how did the right, immediate area, are most of those meeting just the 10-foot setback right now? In other words, will the neighbors around them be at a 10-foot setback for the garage, or are they in compliance with the newer?
Well, that's a little bit hard to answer. There's not a lot of neighbors around there. The east side is Mountain View Road, and there's some structures on the east side of Mountain View Road, but I don't think there's anything on the west side of Mountain View Road. There is a small development that was platted as a mobile home park, but somehow became converted to a mobile home subdivision. I would assume that those are 10-foot setbacks, but it's kind of a self-enclosed fenced area in the way a mobile home park typically is. And then south of, or north of it, rather, is the rec center, and then largely east of it is, I'm sorry, south of it is undeveloped land. The closest neighborhoods would be a little bit further south along Kelly, and I'm assuming those are a lot of older structures in some cases, and they would be meeting the 10-foot setback. And some of them were built before there were any setbacks, requirements. But I would say that, what is that, a quarter mile to Kelly?
At least.
Yeah. So it's kind of an undeveloped area, right there.
And where this is going in, it's prepared to have a number of more houses right there, or just a couple, or?
Entrance to the subdivision that the town has been working on through the efforts of the Housing Office and Mike Ely. I believe there are 54 parcels, 56 parcels. This is parcel number...
Two.
It's, if you enter from 10th Street, you would be the second house that you encounter on the east side, on the west side of the room.
Questions?
Yeah, could you go to the map of the, I guess it was the building permit? Explain to us. Could you read that for us and tell us what's, where, where's the garage, where's the street, et cetera?
Okay. So this is 10 feet back. So you can see that this part of the garage is within the 20-foot setback. This is the home, and this is the rear of the lot and the side yards. And then this is the front yard, and this right here is the street.
This is extra helpful. So has construction begun?
Yes, on the home, yes. They have not started the garage yet. They're waiting for the variance to either be approved or denied.
Are the redevelopment standards not to be enforced until the new zoning maps are published in Estu? Is that the case, or?
Well, this garage setback is from the Land Use Code of 2010, and as Peter stated before, it's not tied directly to a zoning category. There are some that have exceptions, but this is a new development, and with it being after 2010, that's where the 20-foot garage setback is. And where the problem lies is if this was the living room, it's fine, but because it's a garage, that's where the problem lies.
Madam Chairman, the interesting part of this, it is the first house in the new subdivision, developed by the town. The town, when it developed it, it was, the roadway was 25 feet, not allowing for parking on the street. It's a narrow street. The lots are small. It's subdivision being developed as a workforce subdivision. The costs are being kept as low as possible so that it's moderate income homeowners can get into them. The biggest problem is that we permitted a 10-foot setback on the, on the building permit when it should have been a 20-foot setback. We're trying to figure out, you know, we needed to bring it as a variance, Habitat needed to bring it as a variance application, because we couldn't move forward without the variance, okay? Unless there was some other way of design modifications that would allow for two off-street parking, because that's required for all residential structures, is the two, two spaces for off-street parking. So when, the issue of having only the 10 feet here is that one of, what happens if the garage turns into something that had been a place to park your car? You're, you're ending up with the overhang into the, I would walkway along the street.
And there's no parking along those streets in the subdivision?
No, it's a 25-foot wide drive, just doesn't allow for parking plus drive.
I don't think you have to wait until conversion of the garage to another use, because I noticed that an awfully lot of people use their garages for storage and park in the back. And I, I walk a lot, and the problem for me is, every time you come into a car that's parked across the sidewalk, you have to walk out into traffic. Now, there's no traffic there now, but on some streets, that is a problem. And a lot of people park across sidewalks in Silver City.
And there is a lot of hope that that subdivision will fill up. It'd be nice if we could see that happen in five years. This is the first home, and what we're, what we're asking, you know, or hoping to see is that the condition would be at least no other variances allowed in that area for such a situation. They're small lots, but there, you know, the variance has to come to you as a decision made by.
So was there just an error in giving the building permit?
Yes.
Well, the building official can certainly, in the future, let the people know. In this case, and it wouldn't be an extreme hardship, but it would have required quite a bit of additional fill to move back another 10 feet.
There's no reason to believe this will be a common occurrence in this subdivision. It's just as specific to this situation. Okay.
Do you have any more questions?
Yeah, another question. I noticed that previously, when we had similar kind of variance, you had different departments review it, and you had several departments review this one, but in the past, I noticed you had several other departments also, like the Public Works and the Police. Is there a reason why those didn't review this thing?
They didn't review it in time. I have the original file here with their signatures, and no departments had any comments. But those directors didn't review it in time for it to be included in your packet, but I do have the original form.
Oh, so you're saying they did review it, just that we didn't get it in the...
They didn't do it in time for it to be included in the packet.
I see, and so those additional ones didn't have a comment?
No, no departments had any comments, except for the meters department has the standard comment that the meter can't be blocked by anything. But other than that, that was the only comment.
So how is this even coming to us if they already got the building permit? Then what brought it to anyone's attention?
As you observed, the mistake was made in the awarding of the building permit. The code says the garage has to be set back 20 feet. The code also says you have to provide two parking spaces on the lot. So there's a conflict here, and so that's why it's coming to you. There's some design solutions to this, but the preferred solution on the part of the applicant is to have the garage.
But I'm just wondering, was there an enforcement officer?
The, actually, the mistake was observed by myself.
Okay.
And I was touring the facility, and I observed, gee, there's, this doesn't mean the setback. And of course, the problem that Mr. Waterman, Commissioner Waterman, alluded to is a big problem, of people parking on the sidewalks. And we worked hard to try and assure the walkability of neighborhoods, and if the second house in the subdivision blocks the sidewalk, it's...
Yeah, and I was just surprised that some of the departments that were consulted didn't bring up issues like that, because they have in the past, like obstruction of view and line of sight.
I don't know. I mean, they did, that is their official comment, or non-comment.
If there's no other questions from Commissioners, we'll go ahead and have the applicant come up and present. And when you came in for your permit, were you informed of the seven findings that you need to meet and understand? Okay, good.
And what I'll do is provide the overview of the project, and then come back and make sure that I've covered those seven areas thoroughly. First of all, I do want to mention that CADET is very, very pleased to be partnering with the city on this project. And what we are doing is building a neighborhood. We are providing housing for low income, and the city is providing housing for median income. And we are, although we are the second lot, we are the first home being built. And this is actually when the, when the project was approved, and we can't really zero in, but Mayor Marshall's signature was March 28th, 2011. And this is actually Phase, excuse me, Phase 1A and Phase 1B. And I'm going to zoom in on the, on Phase 1A. And this is taking us into the project. As you can see, this is 10th Street here. This is the roadway here. We are building right here on Lot 3. And Lot 7 is a parking area. It's a parking lot. And this is where we have, basically, it's mentioning the 10-foot setback. And one of the challenges, I think, with the interpretation from the planning department is back when the architect was actually designing this subdivision, they actually had put homes on here, and it looked as though the garages were just on this 10-foot setback. So part of it was an interpretation problem, and we understand that. This has been, I do want to mention that I'm glad we are the first builder in this project, because we have had several things surface. We had difficulties with the utilities being in the right-of-way. The gas line had to be relocated. We, of course, had, had difficulties here with the location of the home. This is one of the main problems. You saw the depth of the, of the lot, but we're on the downhill side, and I'm going to, in a moment, show you how close we are to this incline. So we moved initially, before we even knew about the garage situation, we moved the home back as far as we could to set it on that lot and not have to worry about erosion, and have room to actually work on the, on the home itself. So you can see, this is as much room we have, and then we're going down the slope. This lot right next door is the second one that we were going to build on, and at this point, I think the town and, and we are looking at another alternative, because it's such a small lot where you've got these drainages coming off, it's going to have to be a very, very small home. And the second home we were going to build, this is a three-bedroom, two-bath. Our second home was also, we have a second applicant, was going to be a three-bedroom, two-bath, and we are now looking at building across the street. Your question as to whether this will reoccur, I do not think it will. We've learned, all learned our lesson. But we are in a hardship situation here, because we basically had started the home. This is going to show you the floor plan again. And we've got the garage here, the walkway coming back into the front porch. This is the main living area, open living area here, and then we've got our bedrooms back here, and then this is a patio area. But once again, we do not have much room on this parcel of land to set this building. Had we realized the difficulties, we would have chosen a different lot. But we're, we're working with what we have. And again, you can see the approval of the city up above on this. This is another component that I wanted to show you. This is actually our front elevation. This is actually our front elevation. And you'll notice what we're trying to do here is replicate a traditional Santa Rita home. That's because we feel this really creates a classic neighborhood. We also were able to obtain funding from Freeport-McMoran. Towards our project, they've donated $50,000. And that's helping us to build this home. So we did not want to go, we looked at several alternatives with the town, one being trying to turn the garage around and coming in off the south side. That wasn't going to work. Another one of their alternatives is to do a carport instead of the garage. And that isn't going to work for us either. This is showing you basically the floor plan. We've got our furnace out here and mechanical out here. This was all poured. Everything's been poured here and it would cause us hardship now to try to rearrange the heating system and the water heater from the plan that we presently have. This is showing a car actually parked right here. We have gone ahead, you can see where we're at in the build right now. We've used structural insulated panels, so we poured the concrete pad. The panels came in, that basically, they went up in two days. The trusses are up, the sheathing is on, and we're getting ready to put our mastercraft roof on. So we have been moving along very, very quickly. We had to stop doing anything on the pad for the garage, which is also causing a safety issue because we have footings there and we've got rebar coming up with caps on it. Luckily, we're able to use this lot over here as a staging area. We're using the lot next door, but we do have riprap where we've got the drainage canals going on the other side of the project, and it's a real challenge. We were going to use the garage pad as a staging area initially. This is another area that we have recognized here. And this is talking basically about any lot lawfully existing at effective date of this land use code or of subsequent amendments to it that does not meet the lot size or dimensional requirements of this land use code as adopted or amended can be used inconformity with the regulations applicable to its intended use, subject to the provisions of this article. However, no use that requires a greater lot size than the established minimum lot size for a particular zone is permitted on non-conforming lot. So we feel the timing was another challenge for us. The city went through several versions of getting this project off the ground and eventually went away from the architect's initial plans. The homes that are now being built, Habitat, of course, will be building two in this phase, hopefully two in the next phase. The town has other contractors that are also building homes. But we feel that because of the fact that I was also sitting on a committee and part of what we were trying to do, this whole issue of garages, we did not want this to look like a housing project. We wanted this to look like a neighborhood. And so part of what we tried to require was garages, not carports, but garages, so that people had an area to keep their garden equipment and other items out of view of the neighborhood. So in going back and discussing the several findings required, number one, we are the first ones to build in Vista's La Plata, and the setback situation was not discovered until after we poured ours lab. Number two, Habitat owns the property. I wanted to explain this to you. That's why we're here tonight representing the situation rather than the homeowner. Until we complete the build and transfer the property to the homeowner and the New Mexico Mortgage Finance Association, they will reimburse Habitat and then that home will be carried in a no-interest loan by the homeowner. But right now, we are the property owner and we are the builder. Also, I checked into the value with some appraisers. When we're looking at a mortgage and from Habitat's standpoint, trying to be sure that we're investing in an asset, that we're that homeowner not able to make their payment and it came back to us, we need to be sure that we can get the value out of that home. I am also a part-time realtor. Three-bedroom, two-bath homes are what is most requested in our market right now with an attached garage. And the value of a garage over a carport is $3,000 to $4,000. So that is another item that it's of greater value to us to have a garage than it would be to have a carport. We have moved the home back as far as we could on the pad, and we're limited to setting it back any further due to the sloping grade and erosion concerns. As we all know, the town approved the development with a 10-foot setback, and that is the way we laid out our design. The granting of the variance will be in harmony with the land use code that was in place at the time the project was approved. The granting of the variance will not be interest to the neighborhood and in fact will support the design intent of the project, i.e. having garages so that residents will not be storing personal items and gardening equipment in view from the rest of the street. So the Vista's look will have a traditional neighborhood and not a project image. The variance will not result in the extension, expansion, and enlargement of non-conforming structure nor non-conforming land use. So I have members of the board here, members of our construction crew, and some volunteers. And they've been on-site. We've been patiently working and moving forward, but we do hope that you'll grant us this variance this evening. Are there any questions?
Any questions for any of the commissioners?
Yeah, I have a question. Could you maybe go back to showing the floor plan or, you know, the map? And talk a little bit about, you keep referring to the possibility of a carport. How would that solve the problem?
Well, I believe the city feels that will solve the problem because we will no longer have this wall.
And so you would have a carport that would still be long enough to park a car in?
Right. And we, right now, with that image that you had showing the car, that car was parked between here and, it was within the 10-foot setback. So the car was parked in here, and then we've got the garage here, and we've got a 24-foot garage.
But three or four feet of that car was on outside of the property boundary?
Actually, no.
Well, if you so, go ahead and bring the picture back up.
Okay.
You can see the corner pin.
Forward.
You can see the corner pin.
Here is the front of the garage. And here is the sidewalk.
Okay. But the corner of the lot, go down just a little bit, right there, there's the corner of the lot.
Right.
Well, that part is part of the street right-of-way.
Is that the lot or is that the utility easement? That's utility easement. And that was part of our challenges here because there's also, was the 10-foot setback, the utility easement had also been breached by the natural gas company and they had to relocate their line.
Your building permit application shows that the lot corners back from the sidewalk about three or four feet.
Okay.
So could you go back to the map again? So are you saying that if you put a carport in rather than a garage, the carport would not come out as far as the walls of the garage here and yet you'd still have room to park a car?
I think the city's intention is that we would shorten that.
And then what is the space next to the garage? Is that just land?
This is a bedroom and a closet.
Up above.
Up here?
No, to the right now. Yeah, there, what's that?
That's the front yard.
Oh, that's, so that's empty yard right now.
That's empty yard right now. You know, that's a possibility of putting parking spaces in there, but then again, that's all hard surface. I guess we could do something gravel. Okay, and right now where the garage is, is where the curb is cut. So if we were to try to utilize this as a parking area, then we would have to go out and address that out of the curbs.
I don't, I'm not quite following what you...
Well, in the...
Oh, the curb is already...
Yeah, we can't see it here, but the curb is already in...
It's already in place.
Right. And I'll just expand a little bit more on what we had also talked to the town about because when we were trying to resolve this initially, we, this is the lot that we're on. This lot is even smaller as far as depth because of the drainage. So one thing we had spoken about, and this is a parking area, was actually utilizing this lot as well as this lot and having the garage come in from the south. And that would have, we would have been able to get more depth to it as far as north and south. Then the concern was that the individual would have too much acreage for this development and it would then cause problems with the housing and federal funding that's been brought into the project. So we've really, we've gone around with this every way we could think of it.
When was this, this might not be yours, this might be a question, so when was this subdivision approved?
It was in development for quite a while. It was actually finally approved by the mayor in March, March 28th, 2011. That's the signature that was on the final plat.
The final plat?
Yep.
I'm not sure...
Right here.
The question addresses a complicated area. The plat, the preliminary plat was approved in...
2009.
And that had all the, the preliminary plat usually addresses lot size, street layout, that kind of stuff. The final plat was approved in 2011. The land use code amended version was adopted in 2010, so kind of between the two plats. But the issue, the setback issue of the garage is a building permit type issue because it's individual to each lot. In other words, if you look at the setback map, it'll always say 10 feet. And so your principal structure can be 10 feet back. So in this case, if you go to the picture of the parcel, not the parcel, of the building there, if that part on the east side or the right-hand side were a living room, that would be fine. And if the part on the top of the paper were the garage, then you'd have parking in front of it. But as Sissy said, the slab was poured when this issue came up. There was no, I mean, all the plumbing, all the wiring conduit, everything was in place. There was no going back from that.
Is this building permit saying that that is going to be a garage?
Yes. If you look at the next drawing, it shows the...
This is a series of, this is A1 if you look up at the top. And then this is A5. These are all approved, all stamped. It all went in one process and one day.
I just wondered about that because when you just look at the one...
So it was clearly when the building inspector approved it, his assumption was the 10-foot setback was the setback for the parcel. And so he approved the garage. He was not aware that garages were accepted within the land use code and that tied with each building permit, it was the town's responsibility to ensure that the garage was in fact 20 feet back. That did not happen here. And so clearly, the city has a fault here. I mean, no question. This is not the Habitat's doing.
And Sissy, that, so the furnace is down the lower left corner there at the garage, is that right?
That's the mechanical closet, yes. And water heater.
So you said that's a problem if this were a carport, although that could be closed off, I would suppose.
It could be closed off, but then if you look at the elevation, instead of having a nice neighborly facade, you've suddenly got a carport. The other homes that are being built right now are, of course, this has been recognized, they're being designed with the garages set further back or the entire home's being set. We are hoping to use basically the same design. This was our prototype and now we can go and replicate this, but we'll be able to set it further back because the lots are deeper. A real challenge here, you know, even to begin with, was the fact that the lot did not have the depth because of the drop-off on the west side. I do have our site manager here and several board members, and so if you care...
Anyone else who would care to speak?
Does anyone else want to speak?
Well, I have one more question. So how long is that garage? Is there any extra length in it?
We could shorten it a couple feet. It's 24 right now. We could go to 22.
Originally, it was 24/6. On the average garage, the interior depth is 22 feet. So that would put, we use 2-by-4 framing. We could be at 22/4 to the outside. We gain about, we slice off about 18 inches. And really want to pare down...
Would you mind coming up to the microphone just for the people on the...
All right.
Yeah, that's okay, just for the people on TV.
Absolute minimum for the interior of a garage is 20 feet. Average is 22 for the interior. To, for the ergonomics of a car and getting in and out and closing your garage door, going in the garage man door. So 22 feet 4, it's there, it's at 24/6, so we could slice some off because that footing has not been dug. Just the side footings were dug with rebar. And we halted construction on the front wall until we could find out what kind of depth we were allowed to have. You're welcome.
I do just want to mention one other thing is that because we halted everything, we've, you know, of course, already have the trusses up. We had to go and reduce some of the efficiencies that we had set into the project because we weren't able to order the trusses and to be working simultaneously with both roofs because we had to wait. So that's also caused a bit of a hardship for us.
So anyway, if you did make the adjustment in the garage length, would that affect you financially at all to make that change? Would there be any cost to making that change?
The two appraisers that I spoke with today did not indicate that. They said basically if it's a two-car garage and it's attached, that's where I got that value from. So as long as we've got a garage, we'll have the value.
And, but the length also does not include where the utilities are. That would not be that long then, would it? That side?
No.
Okay.
Correct. You could probably fit a compact car on one side and a full-size van on the other. And the design was for a 14-foot garage roll-up. It would be workable.
I just wanted to mention along with the safety issues, I was one of the volunteers up on the decking. And since we didn't, we weren't able to work on the garage and didn't have the trusses, we have areas that are going to face the garage that only have the collouts so that there's very, there's no support other than the collouts that come out from the trusses that are in place from the main wall. So we had to be very careful and if you get up on the decking, you'll see peligro and no stepping because it's, there's nothing, nothing underneath. So this delay has affected as far as, you know, we're more cautious on the job and just waiting to see when we can move ahead. And as Mr. Russell said, he's exactly right. It's not as easy as just saying, well, let's make this the living room. Everything's been wired, everything's been roughed. As far as the roughed wiring and the having the chases and the plumbing and all that for the other areas that were approved for such, for the living rooms. So I just want to make that note evident as well.
Can you stick your name?
Yes, it's Frank Aron.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to present? If you could start with your name.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Mike Ely. I am the project manager for the city for this development. I'm a member of the community development staff. To give you a little background on this project, I've been working on this almost 10 years now. The first three years was involved with obtaining three separate consultants that helped us put together a housing plan, which was required by the Mortgage Finance Authority to satisfy all the needs of the Affordable Housing Ordinance that the state has put into effect. So we spent a lot of time doing that, following that, and while during the same period of time, I obtained approximately $2 million worth of federal and state grants to use for the infrastructure. We then hired Decker Peric Sabatini, a well-known architect out of Albuquerque, who designed and constructed the first phase of this subdivision. We spent approximately $600,000 in doing the design and the construction of the infrastructure. And when the architect was working on this, I was questioned about the setback. This was not, as Sissy mentioned, she thought it was a misinterpretation by the architect. It was not. They asked me specifically what the setbacks were for this development, and I told them, according to the land use code, that it was 10 feet. So the entire subdivision was designed, architecturally designed, with site-specific homes, I mean, that shows the homes on the lots with the 10-foot setback. And Jim, if you could show the picture of the subdivision plat, the final plat? Next, yeah. And you'll notice on the right-hand bottom corner there in the third box up, it's, it shows a specific design of the setbacks, and it shows a 10-foot setback. So that's the way it was designed from the very beginning. And when the Habitat submitted this housing plan, none of us caught it because I wasn't aware of the changes in the amended land use code. And so since this, well, let me back up a little bit. The way the lots are constructed, there can, you know, there's hills. As you go into the subdivision, the lots on the left side have a hill on the back of the property. Lots on the right-hand side have a drop-off on the back of their property. So the houses were designed to fit within those areas, which included the 10-foot setbacks. Now, there's a very good possibility, because we're not going to allow this to happen again, obviously, that in the future, so the next house or two we put in there is probably going to have to have some additional excavation on the lot, in some cases, some additional fill to accommodate that 20-foot setback. Because our covenants require a garage. It also requires that those garages not be turned into living space. And obviously, like you were saying, that people are going to use their garage for storage, certainly, but they cannot convert that to a living area. Also, because of the, you know, we narrowed the streets because of the cost of the infrastructure. And that's also that each phase has a parking lot with eight lots, with eight parking spots in it. And that particular parking lot, or parking, yeah, the parking lot is one house away from this one. So, you know, a push came to shove, if they needed some extra parking, they'd have parking one lot away. Now, we are also in the process of design, not designing, but of going out to bid on the next phase of the infrastructure. And the engineer has put in the design the fact that all garages have to be the 20-foot setback. So Habitat has been caught here and put into a tough position because of errors on our part. And so I'm certainly asking that you approve this variance, and it'll be the only one in this subdivision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak in favor of the project? Anyone opposed? Okay, I'll entertain any discussion.
Can I, may I ask another question?
Oh, yeah. I guess if you, Sissy, or anyone else wants to answer this. I mean, we did ask this maybe in several ways, but I just want to be sure I'm clear on it. Would it cause you any hardship to make this garage 2 feet shorter?
I think we would be willing to compromise that. I do not think that's any problem. We'd be pleased to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. 18 inches?
18 and 20. 18 and 24.
We'll have to do a little site design on that. We will cut it back as much as we possibly can, anywhere between 18 and 22.
My name is Michelle Dwyer, and I'm the construction manager and designer. And I believe we can abbreviate the original design by at least 18 and perhaps a few more inches. You're welcome.
I guess I'll start by saying thank you very much for such a thorough presentation. You're one of the most prepared people who've come before us, so thank you for that. And as a side note, of course, Habitat is just a tremendous organization, and so we're really pleased to see this happening. I was completely unaware of the subdivision, and this is a really neat project. So do we have any discussion?
Well, I reiterate what you said. I had a friend who built a house through Habitat for Humanity almost 40 years ago down in Washington State, and they wouldn't allow a garage because that was too luxurious to the idea of a plain and simple home. And I'm glad to see that you've come so as far as you have, and I'm glad to see that there's an active organization in Silver City. And the findings that we have to make, I have to tweak my mind a little bit to feel that all of them are satisfied. And the biggest one, as I mentioned, is, it's, there's a danger, and in a residential neighborhood, it's a minimal danger, but it still exists when people have to walk out into the street as they're going down. And in my mind, I can find that that's largely satisfied because the danger is so, is so minimal. And certainly, being as far along as you are certainly puts a hardship to make major changes at this point. I think, as I've been pointed out to you, in the very beginning, if you could have filled to the back of the lot, it would have been peace, and everybody would be happy, but when you've already started building and you don't know what happens. And I don't think it was declared, created, this was created by deliberate action of the applicant, or, and I do think that it would be a considerable hardship not to approve this. So I have to kind of override my own objections and able to be able to vote in favor of this, but...
Well, do you, your objections kind of fall in the four and five, right? Is it in harmony with the purposes and intent of the land use code?
Well, more in six than anywhere.
Uh-uh.
I think it's detrimental to public welfare to make pedestrians, force pedestrians to walk in the street. I could bend my mind around the rest of them.
Anything else? Oh, entertain a motion?
You want to do? Madam Chair, I move that we approve the variance application VA 12-04, finding that the hardship of which the applicant complains is one that is unique to the applicant rather than one suffered by the neighbors and the general public, and that the hardship relates property, that relates to the applicant's land or property, and the hardship was not created by the deliberate action of the applicant or by one under his control. Reasonable remedies are not presently available, underscore presently. And the granting of the variance is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, and the granting of the variance is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the land use code, and the granting of the variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood surrounding the property where the variance is proposed and otherwise not detrimental to the public welfare. And the variance will not result in the extension or expansion or enlargement of a non-conforming structure in violation of Article 7, and will not authorize the initiation of a non-conforming use of land.
Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Okay. Now this motion is on the table, is there any other discussion on that?
Yeah, I have a question. I noticed that in the materials we received, the staff recommends that if the garage is allowed to be constructed, that any future garages or carports built in the subdivision comply with the required 20-foot setback. Is the staff making the recommendation that that be part of our decision, or are you just throwing that out in the air?
If you just make it part of your decision, that would be fine, but the staff feels that if this variance is allowed, that we would just prefer that it be shown in the record that any future construction need the 20-foot setback for garages. So that would be your choice if you add it to your motion or not.
Well, that's what I was asking about. In other words, is the staff saying that they, because obviously that should be the case anyway, we shouldn't have to say it, but are you saying that it would be helpful to have it said in the record?
It would be helpful to have it said in the record, but it's your choice if you'd like to add it or not.
My concern with putting it as a motion and part of this is that this decision is for this specific lot and this specific party, and so us putting that condition on has nothing to do with them. So I don't see that that would be applicable.
Right, right.
Can the plat be amended to show the 20-foot setback where on the plat, it annotates a 10-foot setback? Can that be amended without a major?
No. I think that this is not something that would normally show up on a plat because it's tied to the building permit. So as we said before, if the building, if the living room were 10-foot, it's not an issue. It's specifically tied to the garage. If there were no garage, it wouldn't be an issue. So it's hard to amend the plat, but I think that everyone understands the mistake and house made and where it occurred, and I think there's a commitment not to make it occur again. The concern was just to make sure that everybody understood that this was a one-time issue. And so that's where the recommendation to, you know, say that it was not going to occur again. So that someone didn't come forward and say, well, you did it for him, you know, I have the same problem. This house was under construction when the mistake was discovered.
After this much activity, I wouldn't expect to see it again.
I do have a question. Could you go back to the picture of the car? So my question was, am I clear? Was the 18-inch reduction just a commitment that they promised to do, or is it a requirement that you're making? It's not in your motion. Is it intended to be in your motion, or is it intended not to be in your motion? The reason I mention it is that it could make the difference between a subcompact and a compact car living on that parcel.
My guess is that was the shortest one, but somebody convenient a hand had available.
They tried a motorcycle.
It's not the extended truck.
So my question is, did you want them to try to reuse the length of the garage in order to accommodate a larger car?
I didn't intend that in my motion.
Okay. My preference would be not to have it as part of the motion, but just to be aware of it, if that's a possibility, it would be good. Any further discussion on the commissioners?
Well, I wonder if it would be helpful to have as part of the motion something about because an error was made in the, in the building permit, so that in the record, we know why this was allowed in this case, and so then in future cases. I'm still thinking about this issue of what about, someone else comes along and says, well, you let them do it. And if we don't have something in the record about why we let this one through, that could get lost, I don't know. I'm just wondering about that.
Well, I think our general discussion would be part of, I mean, it's part of the official record. And I would imagine that the staff is going to be extremely aware of it also for future. But go ahead, Ms. Reading, you had a comment?
The record of the meeting that are kept forever, and a lot of the discussion is not included, it includes the actions and the motions. So if you want something to be a permanent part of the record for 20 years, it'll need to be in your motion. That's the best way to secure it in the record because the minutes are really the only part of the meeting that is, doesn't have a destruction period. The minutes are permanent records, and they are just a record of the action that was taken.
Well, in the motion, you did mention the fact that this mistake was not on the part of the applicant, but rather on the part of the city, so it wasn't their... Well, it wasn't just as if the hardship was not created by deliberate actions of the applicant. And, you know, as far as a future enforcement of the setback, it's in the code, so it should automatically happen, and we're just relying on the vigilance of the department.
The one problem with that is the staff changes. The only record they'll have to go back to after about five years are the minutes.
You know, to me, it would be a good idea for us to add to this, and simply say, because an error was made in granting a building permit with just a 10-foot setback and construction had already begun, and then the rest of the motion, so that that's in the record.
I understand your point. The thing of it is, if you, well, I guess you can always, you can always go back and override something you've done, but there may, at a point in the future, be a compelling need for a variance from the setback requirement, and in that case, it should come before this body again.
Oh, it would. What I'm saying, it doesn't say anything about the future. It simply says, in this case, because an error was made in granting the building permit and construction had already begun, then, you know...
I don't think that's a good excuse for us. Generally, generally, as I understand, the variance should not be granted for economic considerations, and there are other hardships involved here.
Exactly. To me, also, the motion really is applicable to the party that's coming forward, and so us putting something on that is intended for them, and the code is the motion for the city, if you want to put it that way. So, I mean, that's already there, the code is there. People always have to get up and come forward for a variance if they want something outside of that, no matter what, they would always have to come forward. And like you said, if they had a legitimate reason that falls within these, you wouldn't want to say, well, that could not happen. So for me, I would not want to add a motion to something that didn't have to do with just that one specific party.
Okay, how about adding a condition that the applicant make every effort to reduce the length of the garage as much as they can?
Do I put Florida Martian, saying you're moving to...
Well, we have a motion on the floor, so... Well, we have a motion on the floor, so she'd like to amend the motion, I believe.
Yeah, I, I don't know however officially, if you want me to... We need to probably vote to change with, to add the motion, so...
We can vote on the motion on the floor and then add, I believe, afterwards.
Can you amend the motion while it's on the floor?
We need to...
I think you need to amend the motion before you take a vote.
Before, we need to vote to do that. So I know that we amend, we add that amendment, thank you.
And do we have a second? Okay, we do not have a second on that motion. Okay, does anybody want to put for, do we want to vote?
Call a question on the main motion?
Yes. Um, maybe a little more discussion before we go to a vote on the main motion then. Okay. Um, in that case, if we have an over discussion, I guess we'll take a vote, but it'll be on the original motion. Um, all in favor of the original motion, say aye.
Requires a roll call? Doesn't this require a roll call?
Does this one require a roll call? Uh, thank you.
Commissioner Waterman?
Aye.
Commissioner Furby?
Aye.
Commissioner Clemmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Okay. The motion passes, so we have, uh, approved VA 12 dash 04 request for a variance. And thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'd like to invite you to come by and see the build, and if you so care, you can also volunteer. Thank you so much.
Okay. All right, next on the agenda, we have ZC 12 oh eight, uh, zone change request, and if we can have staff come forward and present.
It'll be just a second while we switch. And if you'll square me in again, cheers.
Thank you, thank you. Let me fill my own. Okay. Hi, state your name.
There's others.
Everybody's. Is there a mic there?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Hi, state your full name.
I, I'm Russell.
solemnly swear?
I solemnly swear.
That the testimony I'm about to give?
That the testimony I'm about to give?
Will be the truth?
Will be the truth.
The whole truth?
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth?
And nothing but the truth.
On penalty of perjury.
On penalty of perjury.
This is a zone change, uh, ZC 12 dash 08, and it is changing a commercial area to mixed use. This is the second of our large-scale zoning changes that the city council and the mayor encouraged our office to make. Uh, right now, the area that will be rezoning, or that we've proposed to rezone, is zoned commercial, and it's under the interim commercial zoning until we create the new categories that were called for in the land use code of 2010. The interim time period, commercial highway, commercial light, and commercial historic downtown zone districts are designated on the official zoning maps. The commercial district shall continue to exist, which means once we finish all of these changes, that one will no longer be a zoning category. The use and dimensional requirements for the existing commercial district shall be as established herein for the commercial highway zoning district. And you'll see where that comes into play in the mixed-use area, there's quite a different, um, allotted uses for this zone. And the commercial district will be extinguished after the other commercial categories are brought into existence. Currently, the highway commercial district is intended to accommodate a broad mix of commercial uses, uses, serving residents and visitors, including businesses that are highly accessible by vehicles. For example, in town, there's the area near Walmart and Tractor Supply in Foxworth, that's a very high-traffic, highly accessible commercial area. The district is intended for employment activities and uses that may be more intense than the historic downtown commercial and light historic, light commercial districts, and the creation of traffic, noise, and lights. Higher-density residential buildings and mixed-use buildings containing residential units that do not front on the highway are appropriate. The mixed-use district, which if this, um, amendment passes, will be the first in the town, this is our first rezoning to mixed use, is intended to accommodate a mix of small-scale commercial and residential uses, and to provide a transition between commercial and surrounding residential neighborhoods. Reinvestment, limited expansion of existing residential and commercial buildings, and new mixed-use residential and commercial uses are encouraged. This is our proposed mixed-use rezoning area, and you'll notice that this is 12th Street, this is 16th Street, and of course, the boundary here is along the creek, and this area was cut out because there is an RV park and a storage area, which are not compatible with mixed use, they're commercial uses. And this little peninsula was added because there, this is a home, and these are mobile homes right here, and this is a home. So that's where this peninsula came in to play. Sure?
The first thing that really caught my attention was that little horseshoe.
Yes.
And, uh, again, the area that's on, on the west side of the horseshoe opening, yeah, the one that's in, you want to include?
This one?
Met to be, yeah. What's there now, again?
Uh, this is, uh, residence, and these are mobile homes, and this is a residence. And then I have photographs of the area also.
Okay.
Later in the presentation. And then this is the, the large, um, RV park, and this is the self-storage area. And then this is where the gym is, and this is food basket. And then up here to the north is Ambank, north of 16th Street, and then Silver Heights Boulevard is right up here. And this is the legal description of the proposed area. It contains part of the Frazier survey of the original town of Silver City, um, a very small, two, two blocks of Shado subdivision, and, uh, that is up here. And then most of this is in the original Frazier survey. And the vacated portion of 15th Street, as described in ordinance 702, um, that is right here. Do you see where 15th Street would continue across the creek? That's the area that's vacated in that ordinance right there.
And that's already in there?
Yes, and you have a copy of that ordinance in your packet. Um, this is one of the residences, if you'd like me to go back to the map here, it's right And across the street is BroCom, this is BroCom, the telecommunication, telecommunications company, so that's that home. And then, uh, to the north of that starts the commercial area where the, um, church is, and also a restaurant, and then the Billy Kasper Wellness Center. So this is facing west from BroCom. And these are the mobile homes and the other residents that are in that peninsula. You'll see the one across the street, and then this one, and that one. Would you like me to go back to the map to show you those?
No.
No?
Okay.
And then that's BroCom, um, right there, so that's a business, and then this is a residence right next to it. Examples of allow, uses allowed in the commercial highway that are not allowed in the mixed use is a truck stop, a Buster Railroad Depot, and a contractor's yard. And these are just examples, you have included in your packet a complete list of what's allowed in each one. And examples of uses that are allowed in the new mixed-use area and not in the commercial highway are single-family detached, including multi-section manufactured home and accessory dwelling units. And once again, that complete list is in your packet, if you have any questions. Findings required: When the Planning and Zoning Commission makes its recommendation to the town council, when the town council makes the final decision, they shall at a minimum make at least one of the following findings. Number one, the proposed amendment is in substantial compliance or not in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. Number two, the proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan, or it will adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment is justified in order to correct a mistake in the town's comprehensive plan, an error in the assumptions about the property, surrounding uses, population forecasts, rate of land consumption, or other factors. Number four, the proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the land use code, or it will adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will not promote the original purposes of the land use code. Five, the proposed amendment responds to changed conditions such as changes in assumptions on capital investments, road locations, population trends, land committed to development, density, use on further studies that have been completed since adoption of the land use code, or does not respond to the changed condition. Six, the proposed amendment is necessary in order to respond to state and/or federal legislation. Seven, the proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of this land use code without lowering the standards of this land use code. It's the opinion of the Community Development Department staff that this map amendment zone change meets findings one, two, four, and seven. And we've also had a public open house, and letters have gone out to the people within the zone and 300 feet around it, and we have not had any negative comments. Um, the four people that came to our open house were in favor of the change and the way it's mapped, and most of our calls, uh, were from homeowners or property owners who just wanted to know if they were included. Would you like me to speak to each of the findings that we feel it meets, or do you have any questions?
I'm, I'm okay. Does anybody else want to hear us speak to any of the findings?
I'm okay.
Okay.
Commissioner, um, if I could go back just a few phases here, um, this house or the one on the corner, I'm not sure which one it was, but when we did a, um, spot zone into the, well, into the mixed use on this property, let's see, at this, it was right here, we sent out letters about, you know, changing that particular property to mixed use, and the people wanted that so that they could get mortgage financing on a, on a residential home, which they couldn't when it was in commercial. We had a call from either this homeowner or this one, and I'm not sure, she told me she was at the corner of that intersection. Um, she was just so desirous of doing, being part of the mixed use change, and she said it was, she knew the ramifications for her heirs of what could happen if she wasn't, or they weren't able to sell their home as a, as a residential, and because they weren't planning on making it in the commercial, even though it was in the commercial zone. So that was part of the impetus for making sure that that peninsula was included, because those homes are and have been residential, just like most of these, this, the rest of the area that we were considering for the mixed use. Um, one of the, the initial issues for anyone who wanted to make a spot zoning, and there were several places within this area that there were some spot zones on the mixed use, was because of that, the mortgage issue of not being able to, um, get financing on a residential property that was sold in commercial. I just, I just wanted to bring that up as part of the history of, of this mixed use issue in that area.
Well, I did, because the minister of all the commissioners here were present during a lot of the prior requests that we were getting.
Right.
Anyone else speaking toward the proposal? I guess we've kind of been through this already a little bit, so we probably, I can't think of anything new personally. Does anybody else have any comments, any questions?
I just go back and say, generally, I like, I like to see zoning areas have nice box boundaries and all that sort of thing. And I have, uh, really, over the years, I've, I've been admonished to avoid spot zones and strip zones, and that sort of thing, but it doesn't give me heartburn too greatly to cope with it if our staff thinks that that's the best for the city, well, and I guess, this, this request come from the city, or, or this came out of planning?
It's coming out of planning.
Oh, yeah, that's what, that's what...
Yes, and I think, um, a little bit of history of the town also, is that this is one of the older neighborhoods, and it developed before there was zoning. It developed a long time ago, and it naturally, when, I think Peter can answer this, Highway 90 didn't used to go through town, correct, Peter? So our town is involved in certain ways, and that's some way that this was shaped, because...
And this neighborhood already has mixed uses.
Yes, yes, we're trying to zone and amend our zoning map to be more reflective of how the town is actually developed. As you can see, that's not a primarily commercial area, um, the way it's developed, it's residential mostly. Um, down Swan Street, uh, you'll see on both sides of the street there are residences. Uh, this is the Knights of Columbus building, and this is where the Volunteer Center has built their building. So this entire neighborhood, these are newer developments, and the rest of the green area has developed more along a residential pattern instead of the commercial blanket that it was zoned originally.
And so, I think that's something that happened to you?
Well, I just wanted to talk about the issue that I'm, you know...
I'd, I'd be interested.
Yeah. So, um, as you mentioned, um, zoning didn't really come to the, uh, Silver City until the mid-sixties, um, and a lot of this, uh, area had already been developed, and so, um, the highway was just going in at that time, and so I assume that the planners, in trying to anticipate what the zoning might be, and they had to zone whole swath of town, made some projections about what might happen there based on its proximity to the highway, that didn't really come about. Commissioner Waterman mentioned the, um, sort of, um, bad practice of spot zoning. Um, the town didn't really engage in that much until the last 10 years, but what happened was that we had a single commercial zoning category, just one, and it was from truck stops to body shops to art galleries to everything else, no residences allowed. So the comprehensive plan recommended that, um, more, that, that the commercial, um, categories be increased, that there more, be more kinds of commercial zoning, so we did that, and we have... And we have what we will eventually call the highway commercial, the light commercial, which we haven't zoned yet, but we anticipate will be areas around the hospital, for instance, that are sort of institutional-type uses, but maybe not gas stations. The historic commercial district downtown, which you guys recently saw unapproved, and then the mixed-use zone. This is the first large-scale mixed-use zone. We have employed, in the past, some spot zoning to relieve the hardship of the property owners who were seeking to sell the property, and their buyers couldn't get financing, or they were trying to refinance, and the banks would say, well, you know, this is non-conforming use, if it burns down, you can't rebuild it, there's no collateral here. So we were really trying to address that hardship. We recognize this is a bad practice. We knew that this is where we wanted to go, so now we're there, and we're asking your approval for this. The other interesting thing about this area is that while most of the buildings are residential, there are some commercial. And some people, when the 300-foot radius notices go out for the individual spot zonings previously, were concerned that their property would not allow commercial use anymore. In other words, they were making an investment, and they were relying on a commercial use for their investment. So the mixed-use is a way to accommodate all those particular interests. The residences are allowed by right, and more limited, but still a substantial palette of commercial uses are allowed. So it protects both interests within the district.
Well, I think the only way you can avoid that, right, is to start from scratch.
Right.
And when you've got a city with a long history like Silver City, you have to accommodate the people.
That's what we're trying to do here, yes, sir.
Yeah. Folks who were at the open house that Jamie hosted for about this particular area, I think there were four people, two couples. I think two at least of the people there grew up within a two- or three-block area, right here. And there are stories about the old woman who lived here, and when they grew up and were always getting run out of her yard. I mean, it was, they were talking about it being a residential area rather than commercial. I think they were surprised somewhat that it was commercially zoned when they found out, you know. So it was, it was a good history lesson for us, too, to listen to what they had to say about their old neighborhood, and that they were still part of it.
Anything else? Any motion to pass the recommendation? And we only have to meet one of the findings. So any recommendations?
Yeah, approve of zone.
We recommend, right. And we only need to meet one of the findings, so maybe we have to go over all seven of them.
I will. Would you reiterate a moment, or can I just say that we concur with the staff's opinion?
I believe we kind of made some changes some months back, if you would just list one. Since we only need to meet one.
I'm chairman, I move that we recommend zone change 12-08 to the, the city council? Town council? To the town council. With the findings that's proposed, amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan, and that it will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town comprehensive plan, and that it will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the land use code. And that it provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of the land use code without lowering the standards of the land use code.
Do we have a second? A second? Any discussion after the motion? Yes, then we need a vote.
Commissioner Waterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Furby?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Okay, so the recommendation, ZC 12-08, passes, and we'll go to town council this next meeting? Okay. So roughly six weeks, okay.
Sheriff, you said something about we only, we had decided to only give one?
Well, you only need, for that recommendation, they only needed to meet one of those seven findings. So when you do a motion, you don't need to read more than one.
Right, but I would think that since this is going on at the town council, it doesn't hurt to...
No, it certainly doesn't hurt.
It seems like it's good, maybe better, that it's all the ones that we think can apply.
Right. We just, we used to not read them. We used to say meets number one, number four.
Oh, okay.
And then it was decided that we actually did need to read them, so you need to read a minimum of whatever's necessary. I guess that was, yeah. Okay. I guess then all we have left here is, well, new business. Apparently, last time, when we elected vice chair, we failed to say, I make a motion, or I move that we nominate, elect the vice chair. So we need to redo the vice chair election. So first, obviously, we are open to discussion. If you guys want to discuss anything different from last time, or obviously, anybody, since we're redoing, yes, Russell.
And what the clerk explained to us is that you nominated a person, but you didn't vote on the person.
Okay, so we nominated, and we did not elect, vote, okay.
So you have your nomination, and then you have to vote on your, you want this person to be your vice chair?
I was told something different, and I didn't go back and look at the records, so I just believed it. Okay, so any discussion, or would someone like to put forth?
I move, I move that we confirm Nick Seibel as vice chair.
Okay, any second?
I second the motion.
Okay. And is that a roll call motion, or is that a?
Commissioner Waterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Furby?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
All right, and then we do not have a community forum this evening, but while we're on the topic, does anybody want to put forth any thing, a recommendation for a future forum? It's been a couple of months since we've had anything. Does anybody want to throw in an idea that we could move forward?
Yes. I don't have an idea for a forum, but just through your commission's information, we don't have any projects coming up in March, for the March meeting. So it would be an open, open meeting for either a forum or not a meeting.
Okay. One thing I thought about, last year, we had the people come in from, I believe, both, I think it was both the Forest Service and the Fire Department, and discussed fire prevention. But we did that after the fact of fire season. And if we didn't have anything else, I don't think it would be bad to have somebody come in and do a little reiteration of that prior to fire season coming up, because we're not having a great winter for weather. And so that might be something to think about, if, just as a reminder to people, things they can do to be prepared to help prevent fire. I thought that was really informative and really good, but I think it's good to remind. So that's one thought I had, but that's the only thing I've got. Anybody? So is that something we would just talk to, who did it last time? It was the Forest Service end?
Forest Service end, the Fire Department. We can make sure that happens.
Okay, that would be nice. Just a little quick presentation reminder of what they did last time. It doesn't have to be quite as extensive. It may be going over things people can do with their property would be nice. Okay. Do we have any reports from staff?
Yes. Since we're talking about the community forum, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity last, the last time we met, for the, and the time before that, for the opportunities to present the pedestrian routes plan and the bicycle routes plan. And it gave the public a chance to hear something about what's coming up as a proposal, and we really appreciated that you guys were interested enough to hear us and comment and listen to what others had to say. Thank you.
Is the pedestrian plan already heading toward?
No. Okay.
It's in the same place as the bicycle plan. We're still accepting public comment on it before we take it any further.
Okay. Any reports from commission? Okay, I don't think we have any community input. So...
Move to adjourn.
I second that question.
Okay. All in favor for adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Thank you.